Councilwoman Perkins-Adusty.
Here.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Jackis.
Councilman Grover.
Councilman Keating.
Councilman Daniel.
Councilman Valment.
Here.
Councilman Mazzar.
Here.
President Gonzalez.
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on Bolton Board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Star Major and Home News Tribune for compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. As any resident or taxpayer wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Once again, any resident, taxpayer wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Seeing done, I close the public speaking portion of the meeting. We will now move on to new business.
Letter dated October 19, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper City officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fund Grant Program fiscal year 2012. Anticipated grant funds will be used in conjunction with federal forfeiture funds to purchase four new police motorcycles in an amount not to exceed $34,623.3.
Any comments?
Want to just get new motorcycles? I need the chip. New motorcycles?
Yes.
Amen. Amen.
We've been asking about this for some time now, so.
Four.
Amen. Amen. Put it on, Mr. President. Quick.
All right. Put it on.
Letter dated October 22, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Pitney Bowes, Inc., New York, New Jersey, for purchasing of postage, equipment, maintenance, and supplies for the period October 1, 2012 through September 30, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $225,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 1, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to International Salt Company, a Clark Summit, Pennsylvania, for the purchasing of bulk rock salt for the Department of Public Works under the Union County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the period October 22, 2012 through October 21, 2013, at a cost not to exceed
Any comments? I guess we're getting ready. Hopefully, we won't need it, but if we do, we'll have. Put it on.
Letter dated November 1, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Division of Capital Supply, Inc., Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works for the period October 25, 2012 through November 25, 2012, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments?
Go ahead.
Letter dated November 5, 2012, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to the sole business entity by KDF Auto Body Elizabeth for the furnishing of repairs and painting of city vehicles for the police department in the amount of $14,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 5, 2012, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper City officials to enter into and execute a shared services agreement for the purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel for the County of Union, there is no fee to charge.
Any comments?
Does that mean, does that mean, does that mean you can go get gas from your tank? That, 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 that part of the deal? We can't go get gas when they make a price limit. How long, five hours?
Say?
Four, four hours vehicle.
Oh, for your vehicles?
Yeah. You know?
No.
The agreement itself is attached.
So something about reading it due to gasoline and diesel fuel, sure, by her.
For the hurricane.
So you may have a point.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, you may have a point.
In order for this municipality to avail itself of such gasoline and diesel fuels. Yeah, so, so, yeah.
Purchase for and sell to.
If you look at the third, whereas.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, okay. Okay.
Probably the city vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated November 7, 2012, from Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2013 state fiscal year budget-by-budget amendments, Chapter 159.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 7, 2012, from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your Honorable Body consider the approval of a capital ordinance authorizing the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment for the Recreation Department in the amount of $300,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 7, 2012, from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2013 Appropriations Act requires that your Honorable Body review the city's quarterly budget revenues and appropriations.
Any comments?
Can we go back to the equipment for recreation? I'm all in favor of, I know the director, he certainly needs his vehicle replaced, but he got an old vehicle. But my question, as always, is most of these are replacement, Tony, you know? They're all replacement. Could we find it, please? Let us know. Yeah, I noted the record, he and I had a conversation about his vehicle, but another way on the rest of it, okay?
Yeah, we'll do. We'll find out.
Thank you.
All right, we're putting on the best practice.
Right. Letter dated November 1, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development the required citizen participation plan for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Program.
Any comments? Councilwoman.
President, you're sitting on a board of the Housing Authority. Don't you have a citizen participation when you have those kind of grants coming before the law?
Yeah, they do surveys with the, with the residents. That's what they do.
But currently, I mean, you want to amend this, another term of citizen participation, which is the right thing to do, but don't you, in the past, you never had citizen participation?
Yeah.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
And why are we, why are you amending this now? To do what?
I don't know. Let me look at it again, Councilman.
You're amending, you know, something so that could place, it's good to have citizen participation, but being that you're sitting as a commissioner of the Housing Authority, all those money that comes in, you know, I'm sure that.
But this is for CDBG.
Yeah, this is not the housing.
Not the housing authority?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, CDBG.
Yeah, so it's Community Development Block Grant, that's what. CDBG.
Very good. Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 2, 2012, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting to amend the resolution adopted October 23, 2012, with the American Red Cross to provide Community Development Block Grant Funds to purchase a trailer to assist during disaster relief and for repairs and enhancement, specifically to correct the description of the scope of services as follows: to provide temporary shelter to residents who are victims of disasters.
Just. Any comments?
This shelter, I mean, trailer, will it replace?
No. That's what they're changing.
That's what they're changing?
Yeah. They're not going to purchase a trailer. They're now just going to provide temporary shelter to residents.
To their location. As needed, I guess, is.
Right, probably.
Which I think is more wise in terms of use of the funds than purchasing a trailer, you know, helping people fill them stipends out.
Okay.
Wait, go ahead. Go ahead.
What are they doing?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
What are they doing?
Because I have people calling me now and looking for shelter.
Exactly. Same thing, yeah.
And they telling them to go back.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to find out. What are they doing?
What are they doing?
Okay, originally, they, the resolution was asked, was going to provide funds for a trailer to assist in disaster relief.
Like transitional, right.
Now, this letter wants to amend because the description for the scope of services for the American Red Cross was incorrect. They're changing it to provide temporary shelter to residents who are victims.
To residents.
Yeah.
It just says.
It says funds will be used to provide temporary shelter to City of Elizabeth residents.
Okay, where do you see that?
On the first page, on Schedule A.
Right here, Schedule A. You're right.
Now, I just don't know how they're going to do that, if it's enough, if it's going to be paying their rent, if it's going to be putting them up in a hotel, like, I don't know.
That's what I'm trying to find out. What are they doing with it?
London.
It don't take dollars, but you know, like you said, people are asking for relief, Councilwoman, you know what I'm saying?
Can we find out?
Even if it's $200, sometimes, you know what I mean? They might be mean for them, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely. Can we find out how that assistance will be provided?
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
Yeah. Is that good?
Yeah, that's. It don't take dollars, but okay.
Add every little bit of hooks.
You know, it helps. You know, people ask you to ask me, I say.
Mr. President, while we are on the subject of shelters, and I mean, you know, to help out the victim of a disaster, specifically people from Elizabeth, like, in the last six, seven days, we've tried to send people to the various shelters that we have in the city that was sent out to us via email. A lot of the people choose not to go for whatever reason. Some people use their personal money to go to a motel with a cheap rate, but it's becoming costly, you know, if you don't work, or if you're a senior citizen or whatever. I'm sure there's going to be money be refunded once they apply to the FEMA application or whatever. What can we have in the, we do have an agency in Elizabeth, what do you call that, made up of citizen, et cetera, where the mayor, I think, is on the top of disaster agency or, what is it called, that group that we have?
Emergency Management Agency?
For, I guess we have a disaster like we've been having, you know, there is civil defense, what do they call them?
Emergency Management.
Okay, whatever, okay. Don't they have any money allocated? For instance, like, I have two or three people in the area of Bank Street and Smith Street that they, I was telling you, the councilman, before, I send them to go to Reverend Adair's church, which is a part of a shelter, I mean, they know the paths and everything else. They felt even uncomfortable. What if there's a little money, maybe allocating in a budget in case of another disaster, another situation like this, where people feel comfortable to go to a motel, at least they could take a shower or whatever, if they don't feel comfortable in some of those shelters, I'm sure that FEMA will reimburse in the long run whatever expenses that the city will anticipate.
The only problem with that, Councilman, that I experienced just past two weeks or weekends, every, every hotel and motel, literally, I didn't check the motel, but hotel. All booked. It was solid, booked solid, because I talked to several people, they were just booked solid. You couldn't find a room nowhere within 10 miles, all the way to Linden and beyond that.
Yeah, I tried myself.
Huh?
I tried myself.
You don't talk about that. You experienced.
Yeah, even I saw one at night, some of the crews from out of state staying in some of those hotels and motels as well.
Mr. Surmay, this evening, was trying to help somebody from my, my area of, my ward to send them to Cranford. She also declined, so I said, listen, ma'am, we're trying our best. We have three or four shelters in Elizabeth, you know, Surmay's trying to send you, you choose to go to the hotel, now you're running out of funds, and now you have to stay in your home. I mean, and tonight, when the city sends somebody, you know, she was there with her boyfriend, let's put it this way, and a baby, so.
I'm going to stretch with people, I don't want to stop talking about, I've mentioned once around, but sit me on that. I'm stretching a little bit.
Yeah, you should. That's why it's important. I mean, disaster happens every hundred years.
What do I mean by stretch? What I'm going to ask is, in any way possible, in a caveless emergency crisis, I didn't know you got to figure out who you're going to help. We have extra generators somewhere sitting around that you could give to people, especially like Farley Tower, we all got calls about Farley Tower. No power and blah, 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 you know what I mean? And I feel so sorry about those seniors up there. Exactly. Is there any way that we have something like that around, especially the needs of seniors that in stress such as that, and provide those generators for them? You know what I'm saying? I'm just making these things up, because, you know, it worked wild, because, like Councilman Mazzar said, that some of these people, they, they were in their own place, they don't want to move, they want to stay there, they got their own little ways, and sometimes I don't blame them, because I didn't want to leave my home, you know? And I could get around any place I want to go. But here, those people there, we got calls, Councilman, listen, but you know, we try to help them as best we can. We send food up there, but they don't want to leave their home, but if we had some type of a generators that we could loan them, and they somehow, the Housing Authority purchased the gas for, if you could release, help.
Well, I think that's a good point. I mean, not only the city, I mean, the Housing Authority should have additional, they did have some, but they need more.
They need more, yeah, they need more, right.
What they have is certainly not enough for prices like this.
I know it's one of those things, you know, as I stated to someone the other day, you can't really blame the city or the government, it's nature. However, I was in contact with Housing Authority, because I was getting calls from everywhere, but mainly from 33 Cherry Street.
$400,000.
Right. And I, you know, I wasn't getting any answers. I wasn't getting any, nothing positive, so I, I don't mean they were not trying, I'm saying that there was nothing available, I guess what I'm saying. I don't want to be critical, like, nothing available. So I think Councilman Valment is making a good point. I think we, hopefully, something from Sandy, and I hope that we, we are better prepared next time. I mean, as we speak, not only members of the vote, against citizens are without power, but we have a center like.
By the way, Farley is working.
It's working.
They got back?
Yes.
They came back up.
They told me that it's working, and the problem was that Kennedy arms.
They just turned about two hours ago. I talked to the Housing Authority.
So Farley Towers is.
It's back up.
I was up, and then I went down again, because, like I said, Surmay, I was talking to him, he says, Frank, I got to go to 32 because the power went on, and then it went off, so.
After I spoke with you, I contacted the housing, and they told me that it's back up.
Did you finish your comment?
Sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, yeah, I finished. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about.
Why, certainly.
We need to assemble these people. I mean, we all got phone calls, but most of the calls I received were regarding the citizens.
Exactly.
They were really helpless, and they really.
Exactly.
Needed help, and then I called everybody I could, and I couldn't get them satisfaction. So I mean, I think that's, that's an area that we really need to explore, and we need to really do the best we can so we can be much better prepared, should we have something similar happen again.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's Kennedy arms, I think, the calls we made three times today, they still out. Yeah, but people don't want to leave their apartments.
They don't want to leave, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever reason, they have their reasons.
They send their own way.
But it isn't because there hasn't been effort, man. I know the Housing Authority has been in contact regularly with public service, and the mayor has also, also been regularly in contact. Housing Authority has also contacted the Board of Public Utilities, you know, I mean, they've just reached out and done as much as they can, you know? But it doesn't help those individuals living in those complexes that have no light.
Yeah, that's what I said, we have something at hand, readily, you know what I mean? Like, they make a million just, you know, half another, so, I mean, and we could assist this senior, special opportunity citizen where needed, you know what I'm saying? And there was emergency, where they got, they might be on rescue, I don't know, you know what I mean? I'm making these things.
Dialysis or whatever.
That Councilman said is something that happens, who knows, everyone's 50, 100 years, whatever, but, but at least, you know, we can learn from this and be prepared for the future.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going, I was going.
That's right, I mean, it's all, it's on all of our minds, you know, and as we can see, we're all getting calls from, you know, and particularly with the seniors, I mean, that's heartbreaking that, you know, they should have to, and as the Councilwoman said, you know, I've been there myself, you know, to them, and, and, you know, they just like being there.
And it's not like it just, it's, it's not my ward, that's not the case. We're here to serve the people, you know what I'm saying? That's what it's all about, you know what I'm saying? It's not them, you're trying to get in the glory. When you got a senior citizen saying, Mr. Goldman, I know I'm not in your ward, but in any way you can help me, why, you know, I, I got this sentimental feeling.
Of course.
You want to do something, but what you can, you do, because, you know, you do as much as you can, knowing your hands are tied, you know what I mean?
And in those, those daily conferences that Council was talking about, that they've held daily with elected officials, you know, that has been brought up, you know, as well.
Mr. President, if you might, Mr. Surmay with the crew from the city did a great job on 33 Cherry Street, providing some extension for people that needed to be, you know, there weren't dialysis or whatever, too. He did a super job, I mean, it was really on the topic, he should actually commend him and the staff that worked very hard in a situation that we were in. I think unless Secretary should send a nice note from City Council behalf of Mr. Surmay and his crew.
Well, and that's, you know, the, the bright side, I guess, or the good side of these kind of things, is that it does bring people together.
That's true.
You know, and people do try to pitch in where they can to, to help their neighbors out.
Okay.
Okay, all right, put it on.
Letter dated October 16, 2012, from the Director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, which is attached, for the boarding of upset properties in the amount of $2,751, mind you, say.
Any comments? Put it on.
That's Style Street.
Thank you.
Letter dated November 1, 2012, from the Director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, which is attached, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $7,895.32.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 5, 2012, from the Director of Public Works requesting approval of Contract Amendment Number Two for the contract awarded to Cooper LLC to provide professional engineering services in connection with sewer rates and assessments at an original cost of $30,000, to provide further for additional services regarding the sewer rates and assessments dispute at an additional cost not to exceed $40,000, which combined with previous contract amendment raises the contract to $95,000.
Any comments?
So, so far, we really spent 95 or more than, than 195? Nothing else? They've gone for a couple of years now, right?
Oh, yeah. We haven't spent.
Appropriations.
Hi. Put it on. Letter dated November 5, 2012, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to the Birdsall Service Group, Cranford, New Jersey, to provide environmental engineering services in connection with the fire department, mold remediation project at a cost not to exceed $62,310 plus reimbursable.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated November 5, 2012, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Milburn, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering design services in connection with the lowering of Division Street under this CSX Railroad Bridge feasibility study. At a cost not to exceed $83,000.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Back for the firehouse. Is this the new firehouse? It has more. Is this the firehouse?
Mr. Speaker?
I have to find out.
Is this the one on Irvington Avenue? That's the one.
It's a bit to order. It does, folks.
Doesn't say. You'll have to find out.
We'll find out too, that one, it's the Trumbull Street.
Well, that's the one, too. Okay, can we just find, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Okay, the Division Street. Any comments on that one?
Well, yes, well, I'm kind of thinking of finding out what I need to know, Mr. President.
You didn't like Councilman Mazzar's argument?
Well, I, no, I seen the paragraph, obviously, one, two, like, third paragraph down there, talking about, lower the bridge, I mean, the road actions, I agree, is going to help Trumbull Street and Sixth Street, that's what I was concerned about, that, I think they have it in that section now, that's.
What about flooding?
That's what, I think that's what the purpose is, Councilwoman. They did study down in there, because it's about six and down by the, by line, line, line in, that's what I'm concerned about, I think it's what this whole part, that study, okay? They're going to lower this, they help down below. I think that's what, I think that's what this whole.
Yeah, from South to East, North Street to Trumbull Street.
No, the east Trumbull and Magnolia. Better than the bridge.
Yeah, but then, they, she's at Trumbull Street.
No, but it's, it's under the bridge, it's Magnolia, you know, right there, Magnolia Trumbull.
Right.
It's really Magnolia, East Grand and Trumbull, I think, in this section.
Yeah, but I'm hoping.
To north of Magnolia.
By, that Donahue, the form, that Donahue nightclub, that's where the bridge is.
Yeah.
And we need to, because it's every day, there's always something.
Well, we don't get no flood in there, but the problem is, Frank, is down by.
It's the overpass.
The overpass.
The overpass, right.
All those people, they don't even see the sign, every time they.
Well, that's every bridge. Yeah, but I think the biggest problem is, is the flooding condition down.
No, I think it's not for that, it's really for, it's for the allowing the trucks, the clearance for the trucks to go to port.
Yeah, I guess they do have that.
Because it's, as they come off the, as they come off the turnpike.
Right, they make the left, make the right there.
I would tell them it's making tons of money, God bless them.
No, and I'm thinking they're doing this because with the ShopRite expansion, they have more trucks and go that way. I think that's why they're doing it.
But let me say, so, you're probably right, but let me say this to you, no matter what you do, we put, if anybody is aware, what we did up on North Avenue Bridge, with the lights and, Frank and Light.
Yeah, but that's why they have to, you have to increase the depth, so the trucks can go under.
We put lights up there, and they.
Yeah, it's not about that, because right now it's 12 feet, and then they trying to make it like 14, 15.
Not for anything.
13, 14 inches.
But there is, I have one of my friend, he bought the luncheonette from another friend of mine, and that poor guy, so every time there's an accident, and he bought a truck, he loses money.
No, that's what I was saying, but no, it's all about the truck traffic.
Truck traffic.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to go back to that remediation for the mold. Yeah, that's the fire headquarters, isn't it?
Is that the one on Irvington Avenue?
Yeah, it is a, in the paragraph, third paragraph, we'll see. It's mentioned, fire headquarters.
Oh, that's the fire headquarters. I didn't want to assume that's what that was. Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
That's why the director got sick?
Yeah.
All right, all right.
So I guess, let's put this on with the Division Street?
Yes.
I guess we, generally consensus is, it's a good idea.
Oh, yeah, it is a good idea.
It could be for multiple purposes.
No, but I think it's for truck.
I think the Councilwoman was correct about the lowering of the truck track.
Yeah, because I said, right, I wanted to, where is it? Then I thought about the flooding, but no, it's.
Yes, got it, but I want to make sure, and I've been talking, talking to the Director of Public Works, I can't lose sight of trying to alleviate these flooding condition down on Trumbull and Sixth.
That's a little.
Yeah, and that's one of my purposes. We have alleviated the problem of that.
This, I know, but I hope this, it looks at that, I mean, that it's not.
Oh, yeah.
I think the study has, you know, taken that into consideration.
No, no, let them just do this first, and then do a separate study.
Yeah, we're going to do the study on there. Yeah, we're working to fix.
Okay.
Need to put another pumping station down there.
Well, whatever.
A big one.
Whatever we take, Councilman, we're going to do that.
We'll figure it out later.
We'll get it, we'll get it.
Letter dated October 26, 2012, from the Police Director recommending the establishment
of loading zones in front of Roxanna's Cakes, 439 Pennington Street, seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and S&amp;B Refrigeration, 10/11, 10/15, East Grand Street, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I'm going to hold.
Are these in the third ward?
I know the Pennington.
Pennington is. East Grand is fifth ward.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned about that muscle, can you hold that muscle?
Yeah. No, they'll say, Councilman.
Oh, that's right, that's right here, Oak, you know, that's.
But I need to find out what.
There's nothing over there.
Yeah, but as long as they not going to block any, let me just take a look at it.
Maybe they're not going to take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, well, hold on.
And I, I'll take a look at it sometime, maybe tomorrow, when I talk to Police Director, find out what's, what they're.
What they're talking about.
Yeah, what they're talking about.
Where is Oak Street located?
Right there, right, you know, just, you know, if you're going out toward the highway, just before you get to the traffic light on the highway.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
On the left-hand side.
Right, okay.
The short street.
No, I think people don't need to do that. No, I don't think they should do that, because they're going to have all that mess up there.
Yeah, I just see that, but I want to take a look at it, Councilwoman, you know what I mean?
There's already a mess over there.
Yeah, I don't want to say yes, I got to take a look at it, because that's where they, that's where they doing the, that used, used furniture. Because that's where they, that's where they doing the, uh, that used, uh, furniture place, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
So I got to take a look at that.
You know, where, um, barns.
Barns, you're right.
Okay.
I don't want to say yes, I want to make sure I take a look at it, because when I saw that.
When I say yes.
I got to take a look at what, I don't want to block traffic, because it's main, main street there.
It already looked like sand, but it's not over there.
Maybe they can, maybe they can put the, the loading dock, I mean, loading zone on Oak Street, on East Grand Street, you understand?
Right.
That's fine, okay.
They have an empty lot, like.
Correct, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, just hold, just hold it. And I think, Councilwoman, hold it, don't worry.
Yeah, they were holding them both.
Oh, okay.
They were holding them both, Councilman is not here also.
Thank you.
Okay, letter dated October 26, 2012, from the Police Director, requesting to establish handicap parking spaces. Okay, sixth ward, 655 Norwood Terrace, personalized.
Now, let me talk to Mr. Corincia, usually I'm on the phone once a week, I don't know why you want to personalize now.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on for a couple of days.
409 South 7.
Definitely, the application is incomplete inside, can we get the entire file if possible?
You want to hold that one too?
Well, I know, I know Josipin, she's a good friend of mine, but we still have to, you know.
Okay.
I don't know why she wants also personalized.
All right. Second ward, 10 South Fifth Street, personalized.
Hold it, please.
Fifth ward, 1006 Monroe Avenue.
Hold.
I'll hold the third. Fifth ward, 1031 Louisa Street.
Hold.
And I'll hold the first. Okay. All the others are in the first ward, so I'm going to hold those. Okay. Okay, email dated October 22, 2012, from the Operations Manager at the Elizabeth Parking Authority, is requesting to amend Chapter 10.36.20 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically to amend, delete, and add parking meter areas.
All right, I'd like for you to take a close look at this, basically what they want to do is delete a few areas that have meters and amend a significant number of areas that don't have meters. So I, and, and. You put in more meters where there aren't meters presently. Uh, Councilman, I mean, the Operations Manager did mention it to him, I told him to send it down here, we would look at it, but I think we should hold it, I mean, there are some that are in the other wards, and I think we should put this on hold.
Yeah, I agree.
Unless Councilman Mazza doesn't agree.
I don't know, I got to review.
He agrees, Mr. President.
Yeah, I think we only have to look at this and digest it and.
Especially if it comes from the park.
We don't have the Councilmen of the first ward, the fourth ward, or not here, and there's, some of them are in their areas as well. So, so they want to, yeah, add meters to several areas throughout the city. Uh, the number, if you can see on Morris Avenue, some more, East Jersey Street, Chestnut, East Broad Street.
East Broad Street, I have a problem.
So, so we'll put this on hold?
Yeah, definitely. So President, we build a huge parking lot, that means thousands of spaces for that midtown section. Why are you going to go disrupt, you know, citizen to looking for a parking space?
Well, I, my understanding in talking with Mr. Alma is they're looking at areas that are not necessarily residential, but they're mostly commercial business areas that are not being used supposedly. I don't know all the areas here, but that are mostly commercial business areas, and it really not going to have a significant impact on residents, because supposedly there are very few residents that live there. And it's the businesses that are using it, so that's what I was told. But you'll each have to look at, look at this, and, you know, our, our large colleagues as well, and, and, you know. So we'll hold it until, okay, everybody has had opportunity to take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated October 24, 2012, from Edwin Gomez, Coco Bongo Productions, requesting permission to leave the 10th Annual Colombian Independence Day Festival to be held on Sunday, July 21, 2013, on Morris Avenue from Sayer Street to Julian Place and Westfield Avenue between North Broad Street and Harrison Street, from noon to 9:00 p.m.
Uh, this request, yeah, I mean, first of all, the Councilman of the ward is not here. But secondly, we spoke before, I remember we touched on this, that we didn't want to do a request no earlier than six months before.
I think there's an ordinance.
No, well, I put the ordinance, everybody has a copy of it, I made sure everybody has, have a copy of it there, the festival's ordinance. Um, in terms of the, in terms of council, our only responsibility is looking at the dates, the hours, make sure it's on city-owned property, sidewalks right of way, that sort of thing. Um, and they have up, only, they have to give us two weeks' notice to make the request, according to the ordinance. So, but I know in form we talked about, you know, waiting at least six months before we consider it. Now, I don't know what this body would like to do, at this point, we can wait till Councilman Zvenus backs in system, his ward, um, or till the full body's here, because we have more members out, and discuss it further how we'd like to proceed with this request when they come so far in advance like that. Yes, Council request?
Mr. President, I agree with you, it's far in advance, and I think we should wait for, make sure that we have consensus, you know, some of the colleagues might be now. But in addition to that, um, I mean, we all know, to make sure there are no misunderstandings, we all know that I have always supported this, um, particular festival, even at times where there were some differences of opinion in the community and the City Council. I always supported, uh, Coco Bongo Productions, because I, I am, I'm aware of their expertise, and they can do a great job. But I attended a meeting, I attended a meeting, um, a few months ago. I know that Councilman Mazza was there, I know that Councilman Grover was there. I'm not sure, Mr. President, if you, whether or not you were at a meeting.
No, unfortunately, I did not.
Okay, but you knew, you know the meeting in progress.
I was aware of it, yes.
And at that meeting, if my memory serves me right, uh, I was, we all left very happy, because, uh, there were members of the Colombian community representative of the various groups that have always requested a festival, uh, like the Merchants Association.
Right.
Uh, and my understanding is that the consensus are there that evening was that they would do one festival combined. That was my understanding, so I think that clarification, I, I, I would like to know, since that was discussed in my presence, and we were, we were told that that would be the case, uh, that for the following year it would be a combined effort to ensure that it was as successful as possible, so, you know, as I said, I have no problem supporting something like this, but I, but I'd like to know whether or not they are going to do, do it combined as one, one, uh, festival. Uh, that was, that was, that was my understanding. At that meeting, like I said, there were representatives from, the President of the Merchants Association was there, and she agreed, and the President of Coco Bongo Productions was there, and he, and they both spoke publicly, so I, I would like to find out before I.
No, I agree with you, I think, uh, our hope was is that this year it would be one effort.
Correct.
You know, by the entire community. Um, I don't know the status of that is, I don't know, but I guess we certainly could reach out and.
Yeah, and in all fairness, I mean, we, the credit, credit is due, we all, you know, we all participated in a meeting, the elected officials, but it was really Councilman Grover who insisted that we do it that way. I'm sorry? No, 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 this is, this was a meeting, and they invited some, all of us could not be there, but I wore them. And what I'm saying is, and Councilman Grover emphasized to the group, listen, you're going to get City Council support, but let's do one. Let's do one to avoid any kind of friction, and they agreed to do one. So that's the only point I make.
That's nice.
Okay, so I guess we agree, we'll hold it, and we'll talk about it at the next council meeting.
Not if I, Mr. President, if you might, notify the individual corporation or wherever somebody goes to this letter, whoever is Coco Bongo.
Yes, this came from Coco Bongo.
I have the Secretary send a notice that City Council received the letter, we're going to take action, you know, by, from this particular time, so this question that City Council asked, and we'll see what happens, because as Mr. Questa said, our day, that was supposed to be only one particular big festival, cultural, whatever. And you need time, because it takes a lot of times to fill up the permits in City Hall. By the time they do this thing, by the time it goes to B, by the time it goes to C, by the time it goes to D, it takes a tremendous time. Uh, I wish there would be a package where somebody will be explaining what is required, and what you have to do, A, B, C, D, whatever. Some of the girls are very helpful in the office, but then, after a while, you submit the paper, and then you come back, you go another time, you need another thing. It's like going back and forth, we need to be, you know, time is of essence, and then if you get to close, what happened?
Yeah, and in reference to that also, um, in terms of the licensing aspect, one of the things that we did talk about was, um, rem submitting, uh, the paperwork from licensing as well, that they had made the application along with the request. That's one of the things that we talked about, but again, uh, this is not in the ordinance, you know. So if we want to make changes to the ordinance, we need to look at it and make the changes that we want, so this way, it's clear, and everybody will be working on the same principles.
Makes sense. I mean, that's why one term is not enough, you have to run the second term, you know, so you could get mature, and then, you know, you could change, amend, or delete, or whatever.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll hold it, and, uh, you know.
No problem. Yes, um, there, uh, there was a request from the Public Library. Joe Mantow retired as of, um, October 31st, and they would like council to commend him for.
Commendation?
His service. Okay.
Many years.
Sure. They never said, I told them to send everything over.
Thank you.
Then we have, um, memorials for Councilman Keenan's father, Mr. Joseph Keenan.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
He passed last week during the storm.
No, it's not here, no.
We don't know.
So when you hear?
On Friday.
It was last Friday, and so.
Nobody?
No, no one knew.
Can't communicate.
Did we send what, call it, Mr. President?
Well, I had, uh, sent, uh, a plan.
Oh, you did, okay, so you, you wanted? Do we?
But I haven't gotten a bill yet.
Now, we didn't get a bill?
Be patient.
Okay.
Be patient.
Okay.
And, uh, Mary Murphy's.
Yes, I know about Mary.
Yeah, thank you. Everybody knows about the arrangements for Friday.
Yeah, for the evening.
We sent in an arrangement or something?
Uh, yes, I placed that one wrong, so.
Yeah, sorry.
You're on the, where did, uh, Joe Keenan's father died in Elizabeth?
It was Park Ridge. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a letter dated October 17, 2012, from the City Treasurer with his treasurer's report of receipts dispersments for the month of August 2012, and statements of bank balances and investments as of August 31, 2012. Um, letter dated October 19, from the Rent Regulation Representatives, submitting the Fair Rental Housing Board minutes of September 19, 2012. And that's it.
All right, before we, uh, we move on to, um, to the rounds, so just, I just want to know just a couple of things, um, I guess you should, maybe you got copies, maybe, you know. I did send out the letter to Community Investment Strategies, inviting them to come to one of our next meetings and chambers, November 27, December 11, or December 26. All right, waiting to hear back from CIS on our response. Uh, council members at the last meeting requested that we send a letter inviting them to come back, give us an update, and so they could answer some of the questions on, you know, the progress and what's going on over at Oakwood Plaza. Also sent the letter, uh, to the administration, requesting that they designate someone that will coordinate the efforts taking place over there, and someone that we can contact and find out, you know, if we have a question about what's going on at Oakwood, that, uh, you know, they would be able to fill us in versus having to go to different departments. And that, so I'm still waiting for a response on that as well. All right, um, as we all know, the League of Municipalities is canceled, so, uh, we're looking at pushing our meeting back again on the 13th, from 3:00 to 7:30, if that's okay with everybody?
I remain.
Yes.
All right, okay.
Is there time to put your minutes in?
Yes.
Well, we'll go try and get it in the paper.
Oh.
Do you think you have time?
Uh, Martha's going to call them tomorrow.
All right, so, so hopefully, then, if we don't have the notice time, we'll meet at 3, but we'll let you know. Hopefully, we can meet at 7:30. Okay?
I like a plan, Mr. President.
All right, uh. If you look, you have there for you the, uh, ordinance that has to do with the license transfer. Councilwoman, if you look at the bottom paragraph, you have it there, they have included an application for person to person, a place to place. If you look down here on this paragraph, you'll see it in the middle, an application for person to person, a place to place, that has been changed with the friendly amendment to include that. Okay, so everybody has a copy of that, and we'll be voting on that at the next, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't know if it's too early yet, but, uh, our party for the staff, uh, do we want to, you know, look at a date now? Um, staff, the preference would be to hold it on a day that's not the day of the meeting, but earlier in the day, so that this way, you know, they can go almost like right after work, maybe about 5:00 o'clock, and they can get home early.
Okay.
Enough. So I don't know if we would like to entertain some dates now, would you like to suggest some dates?
What's the calendar?
You know?
Huh?
It's never too early to go.
Plan board. Okay.
I don't know about her.
Would be better if I hold it this way?
No.
Because I can't see.
Don't worry about it, just pick some dates.
You choose.
It's always going to interfere with someone meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Any community meetings?
Oh, I have always community meetings.
We have to take that into consideration, and then we have to take in.
We had that problem before, somebody had a community meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's maybe something. What do, how do, how's, how's Mondays work for people? How about the 17th, third Monday of December? Just a week before?
That's not very familiar.
No?
I can't remember that, so.
You want to do it earlier than in December?
We have ABC meeting on the 17th.
How about the 3rd?
The first week.
The first week?
Yeah, let's do the first one.
Of December?
Yeah.
On a Monday?
Yeah, how about, you think Monday, December 3rd, or you want to do it later in the week?
December, is that December, December what, the 3rd?
I think the 3rd is better.
The 3rd is a Monday.
The first Monday?
Yeah.
How about Thursday?
Thursday.
Let's do, let's do the Monday.
Monday better for you?
Monday better for me.
For you?
Yeah, for me, yeah.
How about you, Councilman?
But we also have.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Or do we want to wait, I mean, we do have a few colleagues that aren't here.
He can just email and let him know. I'll put it on a calendar, if he ever works.
Does that work for those that are here now?
Yeah.
December 3rd, Monday?
Uh-huh.
5:00?
Okay.
Yeah.
How does December 3rd, 5:00?
I like a plan.
All right, we'll shoot for that.
I want a Thursday, but, you know, I, I yield to my, my colleagues.
I buy you a drink.
Where are we going?
The 3rd, December.
Where are we?
The staff will let us know.
Let them know, let the staff let us know. They're, they're picked. They'll, they'll pick.
Sorry, does not open the box.
He's watching, but Councilman Questa had also suggested something.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
We don't want to say tape in case if he's watching. Your suggestion.
Oh, you doubt?
Why, you never know, never know.
Yeah, he, he may not want that, but I, that's why I made the comment, that particular meeting, that it should be something that we should be prepared for. And let's say, just in a tweet, we do it next week, because he's not going to tell us when he, he, and essentially, he doesn't want it. I just think that, and I, what I meant was, it's not kind of recognition. Doesn't have to be a, I mean, that would be, I would do that if he...
I wouldn't want any people push me out, so.
You won't be surprised?
I mean, just be honest, you know.
He's surprised, right?
Surprise would be bad, it is.
Well, let's set this up, and then we can talk about that, and see what we can come up with.
Does will he come?
Yeah, but you tell him, you know, we're just kind of surprised, just kind of quiz him a little bit, say, "Hey, we got, come on, man, let's go."
He usually, he always be surprised.
Frank's good.
If Frank can do him, man.
Frank can get him there. Frank's good at it.
I think I have the best chance.
Oh, you have the best chance, absolutely.
All right.
I'll get you somebody.
All right.
I, I like the idea. But maybe you're surprised.
It's good, it's good. He can walk away once he's there.
Okay, so we'll do the once around? Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I'm going to try to be brief. As, as we talked on numerous occasions regarding this ordering, ordinance doesn't speak to the fact that people are in the park after dark as a violation. And that's what we've been talking about, is trying to put it on, unless I'm not reading it somewhere.
No, we, your concerns have been noted. We've tried to arrange a meeting with police, with Public Works, but they've been working around the clock, so...
Why, why do we need that when we cannot get the law department to draft up something that says, "If you're found in the park at the dark where there's 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock on the streetlights, or dusk, that is considered a loitering offense, and you're going to be fined."
We understand that, but if it involves the parks, that the Department of Public Works oversees, and the police department is tasked to enforce it, we'd like to, you know, come together, sit down, discuss, and get the best possible...
But can you just write it up first, and then we give it to them, since everyone is busy as you stated, and then we can all read it and put our ideals in it?
If you'd like, we can invite you to the meeting when we have, when we get a date time.
Okay, but that's not what I asked you. I asked you, can you simply write something?
Draft something.
Draft for, give it to everybody, then we can read it.
Again, we'd like to have input from these departments before...
Again, I heard what you said. And again, I said, couldn't you simply draft something in advance? Again, okay? Again? I've only been asking for this about six months. Again? Thank you.
We can continue.
Excuse me?
I said, we can continue, I have no response to that.
Thank you means the conversation is over, and I thank you for your input.
Madam, I mean, Mr. President, I have another, on the same subject. Why do we have to give, can we amend in the ordinance the power to Public Works and we give the power to the police to enforce? I don't see where Public Works should be enforcing. Like, when I call for O'Brien Field, the gates are closed, I got people inside, 1 o'clock, 12:30, 2 o'clock in the morning. What I'm going to call Public Works, if anything is going to enter my phone at 1, 2 o'clock, the police should be the one agency that enforces the law. So, if you could squeeze that in, and if it stands within the law, that should be the right agency, the police department.
If you'd like to join the meeting, you're more than welcome.
No, I don't have to join, you're the law department. You have to do it, we're requesting you to do it, you just do it, simple as that. Come on, George, you know? And we don't have to sit down with the police, we tell them what to do, we the legislative body, so you work for us, we want this ordinance to be worked this way.
If you would like to draft the ordinance yourself and propose it, that's fine. But until then...
George, you're out of order.
Relax, you're not, you're out of order here.
Come on.
Okay? Everyone's on edge?
Respect you, you know.
Maybe you need to go to the bathroom or come back and, you know, pull yourself together. Okay? Like the councilman stated, we're the legislative body, you guys supposed to be the one who draft everything.
Right. We don't have to sit on this meeting.
To draft something is disrespectful. Just, just watch it, okay, just relax.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, that's all I have, because all I've been asking for is... That's all I have, Mr. President, trying not to be long.
Councilor Don?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have natural this letter from, to the PA, to about Oakwood Plaza. Is there any way we can, it's two things, we just... I would see some complaints that, and I don't know if anybody answered. Like, we talked about having lights up there, and they didn't have any, any lights now naturally in all of Peter City. But this is another place that we've been getting complaints, week after week, month after month. I don't know if anybody know, I know the councilman is not here, but there again, not concerned about whose warden it is, it's just that we want to try to help these people the best we can.
Right.
You know, although I get criticized that I don't care, but that's not, that's not true. But anyway, I'm just concerned if we know if there's light has been provided, facility or power, I should say, in that facility up there, that's number one. And number two is, on this letter, that I, I understand it's not.
It's not, I know it was restored and then it had gone out, I know it had been restored again.
Okay.
It's...
So that's, that's number one.
I don't know.
That's number one. Number two is, I'm, I'm in great concern about the soil that has been outside in the facility there at that location for months. I think is, 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 is unbecoming, and it's, it's, it should be, we should tolerate with it. And I think we have ample enough time to remove that soil. Don't know if it is contaminated. If it is, someone should have sent a report to us that it is contaminated, and that's why it's taking so long. And it is, if it is contaminated, it should be covered. I don't know if it's covered. The last time I passed by, the soil was not covered. So that means, I'm assuming, and I hate to use the word assume, that it's not contaminated. But if it is contaminated, it should be covered, and it should be removed immediately. So, I would ask someone, who would be the landlord there, to give us a report on that soil, and what is the expected date that this soil will be removed, because it's, it's had been taking too long to get that soil out of that area. Contaminated soil shouldn't, you know, be sitting around that long to be removed. Okay, now, what, two, two things. Power then being stored, we need to find out if it has been stored, if it's on. I know you said it's on, all, need to find out about that also, about the soil, okay? You know, I naturally, I know the other concern, they, they talked about the concern, but they, and this, they particularly mentioned about the soil being there, and the legislative state had been there for a long period of time, okay? Thank you, Mr. President, that's all. I already talked about the other, I, I got these... I already talked about the, about the generator, about that, so I will...
And, and thanks, as you just reminded me, I mean, again, I sent, and I've said it a few times, we sent a letter to the administration asking that they allow the directors to come to our meeting so they could elaborate on, you know, what they found when their investigators are going out there looking at this. I mean, I don't know, I would think either the fire department will know something about that soil, or our construction officials, or someone should know something about that soil.
But I want, I want us to do a reporter.
You know, I'd like to see them, I'd like to see the director of the Department of Health and Services come up before us and answer, you know, what their inspectors have found every time they go out there, how safe do they really think that that place is for these residents? You know, and, but maybe we can send Yolanda another letter to the administration again, you know, reminding that the request was made several weeks back. See if they can send someone. Okay? Anything else, Councilman?
They don't have any lights, so they call them to them.
Yeah, I think, yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you, Mr. President, that's all, thank you.
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, I think, Mr. President, you mentioned on the health of city council, if you remember, the council meeting, we mentioned that we should assign somebody to take care of all the complaints, so the, anybody that's complained, like in the situation that the councilman from the fifth just mentioned, debris staying so many days in the backyard or whatever. It would have been Mr. Mazza's house, I would be under violation, I would get a ticket. Construction department, whoever oversees or the what about, they should be, look into it, and whatever they have to do, they have to do. So apparently, there's a lack of cooperation from the city part, not from the councilman, from the city agency that they're supposed to be doing overseeing, you know, whatever they think they don't do, you got to hit them just like you hit them in any other contract. So I'd like to see, I mean, not a Mr. City Council appoint a city clerk, on which she has tons of work. We have a lot of people in City Hall that are working, I'd be sure the mayor's office gets somebody from Public Relations, I'm assigned to, send it out. All this, all the complaint that you have on this particular project, or, what do we call them? This side, the...
Oakwood?
Oakwood Plaza, should go through one particular office, and that person should filter right through the agency.
You got a copy of the letter that I sent, requesting that designating someone?
Yeah, I know you meant it, that's what I'm saying, I'm trying to go along exactly, and we hope that we don't have to wait another two months to get an answer. You know, especially like the councilman mentioned, enough is enough now. We have to start in the, do the right thing, find them, and, you know, otherwise, we sell those people, go see the mayor on the third floor. Simple as that. You know, we made the law, but there's somebody else, it's the mayor, has to execute it, right? I mean, it's common sense, at the end, we're going to get the blame for no reason at all, which, we have a good heart, good intention, and, and, you know, we don't need to get into nonsense discussion with the, with the citizen, et cetera, et cetera. We all mean good. We said it over and over again. I mentioned to Mr. Papery, he's been very cooperative. There is an agency, comes in Elizabeth almost on a daily basis, I have a city yard removed, we buy junk car for $500 behind the stop sign, they glue on the top of the stop sign, on poles, on traffic lights, you know. We have to do something, Mr. President. Mr. Papery say it's very hard, but if I would advertise, let's say, as an example, Bamboleo, the Public Works Department or Borogal picks up the 10 posters and issue them 10 tickets to Bamboleo as an example, okay? Why can't we do the same thing? There's a phone that you call if you want to have a junk car for 500. It's a load, yeah, it's disgusting, it's littering, it's amusing, you know, it's illegal. How can we enforce this?
Can I, can I partially answer that? What we did in the past, remember we started, was we eventually passed an order. Remember, we used to have the clothes bin on the corner?
Right.
Eventually passed an order, but how that could happen? I think, George, you guys can probably send it, get that information, and the law department, send them a letter, that they also advertise it, I think, isn't there something about forced advertising? You can't advertise without permit?
We'd have to look into that.
Yeah, would you do that? I think, I think this order said you can't av, you can't advertise without getting obtained a permit. I believe that's correct, but check, check and let us know again.
I believe you're right, but...
Yeah, and we do, we can send them a letter, let them know that... Violation, correct, and, and we consider, we, you know, we can find them, okay?
Isn't that central licensing?
We have a lot of those signs. If I put my election signs, Public Works goes down and removes immediately. Those people, they're still on. I mean, I think Public Works should send somebody clean up Elizabeth. And already, give my barry's location to Mr. Papery, he took them down, and they keep putting up again. So no, enough is enough.
And I concur with you.
And someone should be issued. I could tell you, if you go on Forest Avenue by the traffic light, you got two there, you got one, and make a right turn by San Anthony Church, all over the place. Right beyond the stop signs, in the front of the stuff, I mean, you see them on poles, you see them on the metal poles, you see them glue like with the...
The wire.
Right.
You reported it to licensing?
No, I reported to Mr. Papery to send it through.
Central license.
We want to clean up, it's not going to be central license clean up.
But they go after them, and they summons them.
Listen, which, the contract, what she's talking about.
Yeah, they go after them and summons them.
Because I believe it's the order said you cannot advertise...
Right.
Without a permit.
They have to come in central license to get it.
Well, there's certain advertising they can't do, they can't put anything up.
So true, the city clerk, would you send a letter to the office or whatever, license at Public Works?
I asked the council.
Yeah, but by the time he does the law, he's going to pass another six months.
No, 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 he won't take that.
Another six months.
He won't take that.
For anybody, but, you know. Now, I guess what? Is that that, Yolanda?
Yes, okay.
Give me a copy, please, so I'll have a for the record. Thank you. And I have a memorial, which, I'll give you the information, it'll be tomorrow, day after tomorrow. I'll write it down for you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
You could keep that.
Anything else, Councilman? That's it. Councilor Questa?
Yeah, I already said what I had to say, thank you.
That's it, okay. So motion to adjourn.
We, so move, we adjourn.